Am I on? Is this on? Hello, hello?
I think we're all dead.
Hello, hello? No?
That was Professor Otten English.
I hear it out here.
There's a guy back there from Strasburg. He's got a TV. He's open your eyes.
Because I can hear him through the computer, but it's just not amplifying it. And that's on here. None of these are working. Kind of hear you, but I don't know. I don't want to mess with it and break it. We have no speakers in here.
Yeah, I can hear him on the computer. I think so, yeah. Yeah, as long as everyone can hear you in here, we can hear you back there.
Good evening. It's a little after 5:15. It's March 11th. We're in the Tom Baker Room of the City County Building. This will be the Board of City Commissioners' regular meeting. But first, we'll start with invocation and pledge of allegiance with Chaplain Lucas, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, for the opportunity. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we praise you for who you are. We thank you for the many blessings and provisions that you bestow upon this community. We are also thankful tonight for the mayor and for the Commissioners that sit and effort to guide this community. We ask your blessing upon them tonight. We also ask for your safety and provision and favor for all of those that serve this city in various capacities. Protect them and guide them is the effort to do their jobs. We ask for direction. We ask for discernment for the Commissioners and the mayor tonight as they make decisions to move our community forward. We ask all of this in Jesus' holy and precious name. Amen. If you would stand, place your hand over your heart for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
If we can call roll to call a meeting to order, please.
Commissioner Risch?
Here.
Commissioner Zinker?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Schmitz?
Here. At this point in time, it's opportunity for public comment. Anyone who wish to speak to an item that's on the consent agenda or an item on the regular agenda that's not a public hearing, which might be everything tonight, please come forward. State your name and which topic you're talking to, please.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, my name is Ryan Warner. I'm Tyler Parkway here in Bismarck. I come in regards to an item on the consent agenda, specifically item four on Section F in regard to the purchase of a Tyler Cooley property. As I understand it, this is money that's split up between the ongoing Stormwater Project as well as the Tyler, the proposed Tyler Extension Project. I'm coming here to suggest to the Commission that they pull that from the consent agenda for tonight. The main reason is the timing. Currently, the city is soliciting comments, public input about the proposed extension through March 17th. And if there's anyone at home that would like to provide comments, you can go to bismarknd.gov backslash streets, scroll down a little bit to where it says Tyler Parkway Extension. There's a really cool story map. And then there's a public input forum where you can provide some commentary and a yes or no on the proposed extension. And so that comment period goes through the 17th. And if the city were to approve this purchase before the public comment has closed, there's a potential chilling effect on getting any more comments if the city has already decided to go forward with the project in the terms of a purchase. So to respect the process, I'm suggesting we remove that from the consent agenda. And then as far as going forward, I'd like to see this item be pushed back until we can have a full public hearing about the proposed Tyler Parkway Extension. The reason being that this extension would impact in a well-established neighborhood in Bismarck. And to bring the scrutiny that it deserves in going forward with the extension, I think a public hearing would be in order. So that would be my second suggestion. If we were to pull this from tonight's agenda, to move it back, to have a public hearing to discuss the full impacts of the proposed Tyler Parkway Extension. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions, anyone? Again, this is public comment. Anyone wish to speak, please come forward. A second call for public comment. A third and final call for public comment. Seeing nor hearing anyone, public comment period is now closed. Commissioners, what are your wishes with regard to the consent agenda?
I would like to pull item F4 and approve, motion to approve the rest.
Is your intention to have discussion on item F4? Okay.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Zinker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Commissioner Connolly?
Okay. I did not speak to the person, I believe, that spoke during public comment, but he stated everything, basically, that other people have reached out to me and mentioned. So I would motion that we table until April 8th. That's two meetings from now. We close the comments on the 17th, and then we have one meeting before then. But the close proximity of that meeting versus the comments and everything at the public input meeting and revisit on April 8th. That's a motion.
Yeah, I know that. Okay. I'm not hearing it. I don't have a second at this point in time. So it dies. Commissioner Zinker?
Mayor Commissioners, can we just, Gabe, could you come to the podium, please, sir?
Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners?
Go ahead, Commissioner Zinker.
So I just want to, Gabe, could you give us the insight here? Because we really got more than just an expansion of Tyler Parkway going up on Tyler Parkway. I mean, there's some corrections to watersheds. There's other things that are transpiring. So, Gabe, can you give us a history here, sir, please?
Sure. Mayor Commissioners, Commissioners Zinker, as part of our Stormwater Management, Regional Stormwater Management Project in Tyler Cooley, we've identified some of this land in Tyler, in the bottom of Tyler Cooley, as a location where we would need to secure an easement to detain water as part of that project. When we engaged in discussions with the landowner and noted that in the future, the city would want to bring a sewer line through this area as well, in the future where the city may want to purchase right-of-way to have a Tyler Parkway extension, they indicated that really their desire would be to just offer this entire property at this point in time and not carve it up with multiple easements over multiple actions. So during that time, we've probably been negotiating the last year or so with this landowner. And we're, I guess, to the point now that they've agreed to the purchase price. They've done appraisal on the property. But even without Tyler Parkway Extension, the city would still, I would still recommend the city purchases this property for the Tyler Cooley Regional Stormwater Improvements, even by themselves, would still need this land.
Okay. Are there any questions for Gabe? Commissioners, what are your wishes?
With that, Mayor Commissioners, thanks, Gabe. I'll motion to approve the purchase agreement.
I'll second.
Do we have discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zinker?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Moving to a regular agenda, item A. Request, consider request to receive a report from the Downtown Bismarck Community Foundation, Downtowners and Carl Solvak relating to the Economic Development Services provided by the organization. I think it's a 2025 call for projects. Go ahead, Kate.
Mayor Commissioners, how are you? Okay. We'll see if we get slides. Sweet. Slides, no sound. I mean, you never know what technology is great. Maybe. Yes. I'm here to give our quarterly update that we normally give the Commission, and then we're going to talk a little bit about the call for projects. And Dr. Carl Solvak is going to come up and just talk a little bit about our timeline with that. It's, we last reported to you all December 17th. Just again, we put this up here each time. And in addition, is the Transportation Steering Committee, but we're on a bunch of these different groups that works with the city and the community. What we've been working on with, I saw Isaac run out of here, but Isaac and Lauren and some folks from Community Development is our Year Two for the Neighborhood Reinvestment Initiative. And if you remember last year, this was something that we launched. Gate City primarily does this in a lot of North Dakota and some Western Minnesota communities. And we wanted that to come to Bismarck. So we talked to Gate City. We also engaged Capital Credit Union to see if they would provide low-interest loans for homeowners that had older homes that were under a certain value so that they could make those improvements. And so Year One was pretty good for us. I kind of put the differences for each year up. And then some of the adjustments that we have gone through and made for 2025. So in 2024, when we launch it, the two financial agencies gave us a lower interest rate of 499 or 525, depending on the term of the loan. Then the city forwarded $873,000 in applications to those banks. So it comes to the city first. The city checks that they meet those requirements of maximum value and age and things like that. And then they move that application forward. What we found and what Lauren found was that we were missing some folks that were just above that $250,000 maximum value. And so for 2025, the financial institutions and the city worked on getting that to $300,000 as the maximum value. So $250,000 will still be eligible for the program if it's their primary residence and it meets the other criteria. But now we'll, I think Lauren said that maybe we got another like 1,200 to 1,500 properties. Does this sound right? When we increase the valuation, that would be eligible for the program. Another great thing for 2025, rates went down. So the banks and financial institutions adjusted their rates, which they do annually. So now the rates are either 448 or 499, depending on the term of the loan, which is also awesome. The bank and credit union are going to, again, give us $2,750,000 in loan capacity at those rates for this program. So once that money is gone, generally, that's it for the program. The other thing I didn't put up here that we're extending is just the application window. We did close it last year, October 31st. We're going to close it November 30th this year, the end of November. So things we learned from the first year that hopefully will make this program better for Year Two. I think the applications will open in the next week or so. And they can go to the city's website to fill out the initial application. Another quarterly service that we provide with the city is we're supposed to be working on talent recruitment, workforce retention. And what we do there is we have a quarterly multicultural event. We hosted our last one, January 31st. We took a bunch of people new to this community and curling, which was great. We're all friends when we're curling because you're stretching and wiping out and sliding. And everybody had fun. We did a potluck, which is part of the curling culture. And people brought some awesome stuff. So a great event for us, again. We do this every quarter. We had 65 curlers, six languages spoken. And we integrated it in with Winterfest with the Forty Abrahamsleyke Foundation, Northern Plains Heritage Area. Here's just some curling pictures and our curling teachers. We're still providing placar analysis for the city and for private groups or folks that want property insights. We recently provided some information from our placar license for the city of Bismarck to include with their AARP grant that they applied for, I think last week, that Isaac applied for. We use it for commercial real estate support. We're using it to assist the city with looking at potential new parking ramps and how the existing parking ramps are working, and then just general property insights. We also were able to work with the city to facilitate a finance roundtable for the Land Development Code. So you all know that the city's going through this very large process of changing Bismarck zoning, update the zoning and land development code. And one group that we really wanted the city and the consultants to be able to talk to were our lenders that are in the community, how they kind of see the changes. Do they feel that's something that they could finance? Do they feel like, you know, the changes are good, that they're welcome, that there's a market for some of those changes within the code? For instance, smaller lot sizes for homes and things like that. So we had, I don't know, maybe like 10 lenders that were there that were able to give feedback to the consultants in terms of how a bank would look at those types of things, lending on those things, commercial lending on those types of things. So that was really good. I don't know that the lenders have a lot of interaction necessarily with community development. It's more sort of the developer and the lender's piece of that pie, but not a big piece of it. So it was cool for them to be able to sit down and chat with community development, the consultants, on the proposed changes for the Land Development Code. And they spoke, which was great. Sometimes bankers don't say anything. And this was, we tried to get a crew together that would give some good feedback. So it was a good group. But mostly tonight, we just want to talk about the call for projects. We've got that coming out. We met with you all in December, proposed that we do that again as a city. As you might remember, the city did this six-ish years ago. And we think it's about time to bring it back. So Dr. Carl Solvak, who we work with, is going to talk to you a little bit about that plan.
Good evening, Mayor Schmitz and Commissioners. Just a little brief reminder when we had the first call for projects. These are some of the past projects that went forward, and many of them were successful, even though that we may not have seen things like Friends of the Rail Bridge. They were still formed. They tried to make our community better. And that's really what this was all designed to do. So we are launching, officially launching, our 2025 Call for Projects this month. We will have a community development, economic development and city plan implementation of projects. We will take these projects from any source. They can be individuals, they can be groups, they can be businesses. So an example would be the Riverfront Development Plan from the first call for projects, which led to some riverfront development underway. And we will make ourselves available with an online application. There'll be a link to bismarknd.gov. We have a chance for the citizens to pitch to the city. We will take on the role of vetting those and the projects that we will bring forward for the Commissioners and the mayor to decide on. We'll keep those applications open for approximately six weeks. And we're going to be on the mayor's insights on March 14th to talk a little bit more about this. And so we hope that we get a good round of projects from this effort. And we look to better and improve our community. And that is my report.
Any questions, Commissioners? Thank you. Looking forward to see what kind of projects come forward.
Just want to say thanks to Kalen, too. He's helping us with, you know, getting everything up on the website and all that good stuff. So I appreciate all their work helping us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Item B, consider request for resolution creating districts. Part A1, A2, and B, resolution approving plans and specifications unauthorized to advertise to receive bids for the City Concrete 25. Gabe?
See if I can get this. The screen looks different, so it's throwing me off here. Give me one second, please. This is a maybe. Well, might as well have every piece of technology not work here. Okay, we'll do it without the visual aids, then. The item I have before you is the creation of three different districts, if you will. The first is our A1 District, which is all of our new sidewalk and new concrete, excuse me, new driveways, new widenings and new sidewalk, specially assessed to the adjacent property owner, usually used in new construction areas. Part A2 is our GAP project that we would do on a yearly basis. Last year, we sent out our first-ever sidewalk suggestion tool to the community. Went live in 2024. We weren't really able to incorporate items from that, the data points from that tool into the 2024 plan. But we're able to implement many of the input that we received from the public into our 2025 proposal here in front of you. Last year, we also went through a process by which to kind of filter out the requests so we can understand at what point in time is it a gap? Is it something we would move forward with? And versus, how long should we wait until that sidewalk more organically appears at the time of development? We're kind of, to that end, we landed at a 15-years-old for the roadway and/or areas of known potential, known or potential pedestrian activity that connects parks, commercial and residential properties. So if the A2 GAP project is approved, we would send letters out to those landowners along this list. One thing that we did change in our 2025 proposal is to add a 25% city contribution towards the construction of those GAP sidewalks so they can engage with that and utilize that. Only if they use our city contractor. We won't be able to pay them to do the work. But if they use the city's contractor, we would be able to give them that discount towards the sidewalk construction. If they elect to do this on their own through hiring their own contractor or do it two years from now or some other later period of time, those properties would not be eligible to receive the 25% subsidy for that work. So with that, I tried to lay out those pieces for the A2 on the list. I'll maybe summarize our Part B as well, which is our hazardous sidewalk proposal, where we do two pieces. One would be handle requests from the public to say there's a trip hazard located at XYZ Street, at the 1, 2, 3, 4th Street, whatever it might be. We look at that address and confirm if it was a hazard. If so, we would then get in contact with that adjacent landowner and inform them of their responsibility to repair that sidewalk. We also go out proactively and look at certain neighborhoods that would be on a yearly rotation or, say, a multi-year rotation so that we are proactively defining these spots as well to improve the sidewalk conveyance connection that we have throughout our community. So with that, I do want to address the list in the agenda of the addresses that we have. We have five addresses on the GAP project. All five of those were highlighted by either the public through our survey responses. But some of those locations do not qualify the 10-year, or excuse me, 15-year timeframe from the initial construction. But some of those, if I will, highlight the Battalion Street address. That was one that was approved. They were the first construction in this subdivision. And we allowed them to delay the construction of sidewalks until such time that some of their neighbors got in that area as well. And now they are the remaining piece of property that doesn't have sidewalks and all their neighbors do. So that's the Battalion Street comment. Normandy Street is also another aspect. It's a 2014 street construction. But the address that we have listed here is owned by the adjacent, by the, it's a vacant lot, but it's owned by the neighbor, the neighboring property is the same owner. So it's potentially unlikely that anything will be developed there in any short order. And this was an address that I believe we had 12 to 13 pins located on this really short stretch that really completes that neighborhood. The ones at the bottom of the list that was presented in the attachment on Nebraska, Chisum, Claremont, Round Top Road and High Creek Road, all were areas that were either previously identified with pins or represent really the last remaining segment that would then complete the block entirely. But this does not qualify under the 15-year component. So I want to bring that back for your consideration of 15 years from the time of initial construction. Is the right amount of time? Or if there's maybe a different number besides 15 years that we'd want to use for that? So I offer these as, our recommendation would be to all of the ones that are on this list. But if you did want to follow a more strict application of the guidance that we started with last year, the ones on the upper portion of that list would follow that more closely. And we can leave the ones on the bottom for next year, the year after, or three years from now, whatever that may be for it to hit that 15-year mark. So I guess with that, I take any questions that you may have. We're looking for approval on these items.
Commissioner Risch?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Gabe, is the 25% subsidy, is that a standard practice? Or is that just on vacant sidewalks?
So Mayor's Commissioner, Commissioner Risch, this would just be for these sidewalks that are identified as part of our GAP project or our GAP program, recognizing that it's the landowner's responsibility when they develop their house, their shop, their commercial building, whatever it might be, to construct sidewalks. Many of these locations either already have their building constructed or it's a vacant lot without a development, a building permit in the immediate horizon. So the decision at last year's commission was to include during the budget cycle a subsidy or a city contribution showing the city's commitment to putting some of these sidewalks in as well and not just having it be entirely on the onus of the property owner. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Risch? But the 25%, there's nothing magical about that number. This is the first time we've tried this, and it was just what we've put into the budget in our '25 budget.
Commissioner Connolly?
Now, even when you mentioned Nebraska, it's only the gaps at Nebraska. It's not like the existing sidewalks at all. Because along that corridor, it's a fairly new development along those corridors on Nebraska. I've walked them a couple of times, knocked on all the doors. And it's one of those areas to where they're split right down the middle. There's a great big gap right in the middle of those big pieces that go the, almost the full length on the east side, where all the elder developments are and things. So when you're talking trip hazards and different things, that's one area that's really, the subpacking didn't work on its behalf.
Got you. Mayor Commissioners, Commissioner Connolly, I guess at this point in time, we respond to any complaints that we hear. So if someone calls in with an address at XYZ Street, we would go evaluate that location as well as kind of the adjacent properties. But I think you'd find if you're looking for every, you know, non-ADA compliant sidewalk in Bismarck, there's going to be a lot of them. So it's hard to package that all at one time. We try to just take bite-sized chunks as well as we can.
Commissioners, what are your wishes? If there's no other questions, I'm not trying to rush it.
Yeah. No, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Do we have discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.[1737.04]
Commissioner Rish?
Yes.
Commissioner Zinker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next, item C, consider request to discuss the river, road, trail closure by Burlington to Northern Santa Fe, and this is Commissioner Rish's topic, so turn it over to you, sir.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you remember, I think it was last fall, BNSF made a presentation about their bridge construction, and I'm happy they're building a new bridge, and we need a new bridge on the railroad. I don't know, it's getting old, but I'm disappointed, of course, I could carry you down. What struck me was they mentioned to us at that meeting that they will have to take the walking trail and river road out of service on occasion to move equipment back and forth. When I read my February 28th news paper, BNSF simply declared they're going to take the walking trail out in two years. That's a long time. Like, they said they're going to keep the river road open, able to keep the river road open and the river open. Well, I contacted BNSF and I said, what's the deal? You can keep the river road open and you can keep the river open. Why can't we keep the Bismarck's most popular walking trail open as well? Fully understanding that occasionally they're going to have to move across that with equipment and flag and stop people from walking and this sort of thing. They just keep claiming it's impossible. Now, they, they volunteered to come through our next commission meeting, they said they couldn't make it tonight, but I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed that they can't mitigate the safety issues on that walking trail and keep that open for the most part, just like they're blocking river road and the river. I've traveled across this country extensively, and I go to big cities, and there'll be construction on a building. And what do they do? The sidewalk's still open. They've got scaffolding with coverings on the, on the sidewalks, and people can still utilize the sidewalks. BNSF shut this thing down, the walking trail down, not last Monday, the Monday before, so it's been down for nine days. Nine days, there was no activity whatsoever until today. This task weekend, we had 60-degree weather, a beautiful weekend for people to go on walks, and that walking trail was unnecessarily blocked for people being able to use it this weekend. Today, they finally showed up, the BNSF, I've been watching it every day, and they're cutting down all our trees. So I, I'm disappointed. I think BNSF has hired Ames Construction to construct this bridge. They're one of the largest, most competent construction companies in the world. If BNSF said to Ames Construction, keep that walking trail open as much as possible and protect those that are walking underneath it, Ames Construction will figure it out. They'll get it done. They can have, they can make it possible. So the reason I brought it up tonight is because I think it's inappropriate that they declare they're going to shut it down for two years. Oh, I'll add one thing. In the conversation I had with Amy Macbeth with the BNSF, she said they'll try to open it back up on December through March, or the first of March, like they did, you know, in the winter time when they're not walking on it. But I'd like to instruct or ask staff to look into our options on how to require that this walking trail be, remain open, and if need to, require BNSF to open it and protect our citizens that are walking down that trail.
Go ahead, Commissioner Connolly.
I remember that meeting very well, as, and they did minimize the impact of that, so I would completely be on board with that. Yeah, whether it takes a formal motion or if Jason wants to reach out, I mean.
So I'm, I'm not sure where our jurisdiction is on this, to be honest, so I don't know the answer, what we can or cannot do. It's probably a question we need to ask.
Well, I guess my intent is to have staff evaluate it, see what our options are. The idea that BNSF just declares things, and it's our walking trail, it's Parkland's walking trail, the city's property at least, if BNSF claimed it's their property, I don't believe it's ours. Do we have an easement across it now? Don't we have an easement? I, I don't know. It's actually their property, I suspect we need to have an easement. But even if we didn't have an easement, there's something called adverse possession. We've been in possession for us for more than 40 years in North Dakota, and that's adverse possession, it's actually ours.
I'm, it's beyond my knowledge.
That's the legal doctrine.
So, so only concern, question I have is, is it our, A, do we have it in our jurisdiction or authority? That'd be a question that we can ask staff to research, and, and if it's not, is it the park districts? Because the walking trail might be the park districts and not ours, which then they would have the jurisdiction on. So I think if, we could have that researched so that when BNSF is available next meeting, to have them here, does that make sense, Commissioners? Okay. Staff? Got it? Okay. Commissioner? Okay. All right. Next item is consider request to receive legislative update and provide direction to staff, and I'm not sure, Jason's got a brief report, I believe, but they're just back in session, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Yes, a very brief report. Last week, the House and Senate came back together after crossover. Most of the work that was done was without public hearings or committee work. However, this morning, for Commissioner Rish and Commissioner Connolly, Mayor Schmitz, Commissioner Zinker, city engineer Gabe Shell and I, we were at the hearing for House Bill 1020. That is the bill that contains the budget for the State Water Commission. More importantly for us as the city of Bismarck, that is the bill that would have funding for the South Bismarck Flood Control Project. Mayor Schmitz did a little bit of an introduction on the project, and Gabe came forward with the presentation that you've all seen here and a presentation that he shared a number of times in the recent past. No real detrimental questions from any of the committee members. I think everybody understands what the ask is here. For them, it's a little different type of a flood project than they're used to. I guess one of the questions or the comments was relating to earth and berms or flood walls, which you commonly see in other places. That's not really the case here. We've got kind of a different scenario. We've talked about the gate structure on South Washington Street near the elementary school and a pumping system to help alleviate any stormwater that backs up in that channel. So that was kind of the primary topics there. Maybe just to touch on a couple of others, as we've noted in the past, we've got three bills that came out of the House that are all dealing with property tax. 1176, 1575, and 1474. There was a hearing for 1575 today, and that was at the exact same time we were with the State Water Commission's budget in a different part of the Capitol. So I don't honestly know the results of the hearing from 1575. I just looked before stepping up to the podium, and there was not an update on that one. As we noted, with three property tax bills coming out of the House, it's anticipated one of those would become the frontrunner for support. 1176 has been the one that we've focused quite a bit of attention on. It seems to have senior leadership support, governor support as well. There's a number of components in there that relate to the homestead tax credit, but for us locally, there is the discussion of a 3% general fund property tax cap with House Bill 1176. As you all know, we've not taken a position on that, however, we've had a number of conversations with local state leaders, with the governor as well, and sharing information, sharing our concerns, but also recognizing that the caps, property tax caps seem to be inevitable, and we're willing to accept that so long as we can live within the, live within the means and maybe have a cap that is more in line with a consumer price index or something that can fluctuate on a annual or biannual basis. Maybe just to draw your attention to the handout that was at your workstation, I've added a, a new column on the far right. That is the column that notes the status at crossover. So previously, the blue column was the action prior to the end of February. I'll direct your attention to that far right column. If, if the box is highlighted in green, there's activity with dates and, and those specific events. If the boxes are white or without information, it's because that bill has not yet been acted upon. So we'll continue in this format as we trudge through the rest of the session, and of course do our best to keep everybody up to date. If you guys have any questions, thoughts, or comments, I'm happy to listen or answer those questions if I may.
Commissioner Connolly.
Not so much in any of the bills that we're watching here, but the hearing this afternoon for 1168 was up, and the consumer price indexing came up a lot in the conversation, whether it's a percentage plus one point or plus two points. That seemed to dominate the area of that particular, and I'm pretty sure that will get to the other bills that are, that we are watching.
Okay. Anything else?
Nothing more for me.
Jason? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other business tonight? Commissioner Connolly.
It's not official yet, but we are planning for the Transportation Working Group, a community conversation with the Human Relations Committee on public input for how that moves forward. And when we list the official date and time and things, we'll share that more, but just getting out in front of it a little bit, because I've already been talking to stakeholders and bringing them. But we're looking at May 8th, tentative.
Commissioner Rish.
I just want to say, the guy that sits behind me in church on Sundays is Harley Swenson. Harley Swenson was a longtime engineer, he's long retired, but you can look at all the old maps and his name's all over the place. After church, he commented about how well our traffic lights are timed in Bismarck. And after we were talking about this, he said, you know, now that you mention it, I sometimes zip right up and down some of these streets, and the lights are timed well. So whoever's doing the traffic light timing, excellent performance, and a guy like Harley Swenson, around the block, and I can notice this. We're happy.
Anything else? Anything else? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.